I'd like to call the monthly Board of Education meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a little chilly in here. I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Kaylin makes the motion, do I second it?
I'll second it.
Mr. Quinn, second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Citizens' statements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had no request for participation as per Board policy, BDDH.
Written communications?
We had no written communications either.
Military update.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and school board members, and Waynesville School District personnel. General Donna Martin wanted me to convey her gratitude for the Partners in Education program and the schools' involvement and dedication to partnering with our military members, and that's all I have for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Full house tonight.
Full house, yes.
You got your announcements?
I do have my announcements, yes. Let's see, we'll do a little competition here, although one has a few more staff members. Wood Elementary's in the back. Not bad, not bad, and Williams Early Childhood Center's in the back. I don't know, gave you good competition there. The last time, I'm going to visit Wood on Friday, and the last time I was at Williams, I got to hold the chicken, and unbelievable, that chicken is like a pet dog or something, you can pet it, and fell asleep on my arm and everything, I've never seen anything like that before in my life, but...
Is that all your training from home?
But now I'm gonna get married one, yeah, yes, that's all my training from home. I lost my chickens unfortunately, so...
I know.
And it's been a tough thing, but tonight, we will recognize Wood Elementary and Williams' Early Childhood Center on post. I want to thank all of you for what you do for our students, and I look forward to hearing from you on tonight's Spotlight on Education. We have several concerts coming up here, so bear with me just a minute as I read through all of our dates, I'd like to invite the public to several upcoming fine arts performances. On December 6th and 7th, the Waynesville High School students will direct and perform one-act plays. Holiday concerts will be held on December 10th, 11th, and 12th. On December 10th, Waynesville High School will hold its choir concert. On December 11th, our middle school choir will host its concert, and on December 12th, our high school band will perform a holiday concert. Details will be forthcoming in the upcoming Eye and the Tiger, which will be delivered to all patrons during the first week in December. The 8th Annual Route 66 Shootout, Pulaski County, USA, will be held on Friday, December 20th, and Saturday, December 21st, at Waynesville High School. The cost for admission each day to the shootout is $5 for adults, $4 for students, athletic passes, senior passes, and school IDs will not be accepted for this special event. There'll be no school on Wednesday, November 27th through Friday, November 29th. For Thanksgiving, students will return to school on Monday, December 2nd. One of our Legos teams will be advancing to the Missouri First Lego League Championship in December. The 6th through 8th grade team, 41656's Leaping Lego Stairway to Croker, nice little local plug there, earned the Robot Mechanical Design banner, earning that spot at state. And finally, I want to pause for a moment and say thank you, our students performed the best ever on this year's APR Annual Performance Report, very grateful for the support our community gives us, and we thank all of you and wish everyone a very safe and happy wonderful Thanksgiving.
I'll say the Board was very pleased with the APR, so on behalf of all of us, we want to thank all of our staff, students, everybody involved with that, it was excellent. And also, I'm gonna throw this out there, Facebook Live today, I did get to watch Ms. Vernon, very good idea on the reading vending machine, thought that was pretty cool.
That wasn't it, yes.
All right, we'll move on to consent agenda items. Bid recommendations, Dr. Berger.
Yeah, just the two items, Mr. President, fairly straightforward items, I believe.
Financials?
Financials for November 10th, 2019, in the MOSIP account, $40,171,761. In CDs, $10.5 million. A general account, $2,402,976. Payroll account, $8,101. Total funds, $53,823,9.
And I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G.
I'll make that motion.
Dr. Ford makes the motion.
Second.
All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Spotlight on Education, Williams Early Childhood Center, Dr. Mitchell.
Well, hello, everybody. It's an honor for me to present our two awesome outstanding teachers. The first one I would like to come forward, please, is Kristen Brown. Okay, Kristen, she's a teacher in early childhood special education classroom, and these are some comments that people wrote who nominated her for today. Kristen is the most selfless person you will ever meet. Her students can't wait to see her when they walk in the door. She is consistent, incredibly thoughtful, and determined to give her students exactly what they need. Kristen is so kind to everyone she works with and especially to the kids. Nothing shakes her. She rolls with everything that comes her way, and she does so with ease. She is such a fun person to work with and always has the best interest of the kids in mind. Kristen builds great relationships with her students and understands their needs and how they learn best. She is such a kind and caring teacher who takes time to visit with other teachers and staff to brainstorm ideas for certain students. You can really tell how much she enjoys her job and how much she cares about students by the smile on their faces each day they walk into her building. She's definitely a positive asset to her school. Everyone needs a Kristen Brown. And our other person is Sonia Frey, she's a paraprofessional in the early childhood special education room. Okay, I'm sorry I said the name wrong, Frye, Sonia Frye. Sonia loves children, she's always asking questions and looking for ways to improve her greatness. The kids love her, they love playing with her and learning from her. Sonia is kind, compassionate, caring, loving, thoughtful, and most of all, selfless. She's the hardest worker and never seeks recognition. Basically, Sonia just jumps right in wherever she's needed. She sees what needs to be done and she does so with a smile. Sonia has had a rough start to this year, but she's managing to get through this. I would say that Sonia can handle anything, she's a pleasure to work with. Sonia has a positive attitude about work even when things are really not working as they should. No matter how stressful her classroom got so far this year, you would never know by looking at her. When things got tough, she stepped up and rocked out as a classroom teacher. She took on the role and did amazing with it, never once complaining. She always has a bright smile and friendly word for everyone. Sonia always has something happy to say that brightens up a child's day, and she will work at it until she makes even the saddest kids smile. She's worked very hard and has pulled that room through so much more than anyone really knows. Sonia is the greatest and deserves this thousand times over. Go Sonia.
All right, our collaborative team that we're going to recognize tonight is the Pace Collaborative Team of Manuela Finn and Gretchen Beershank, if they can make their ways up. And Ms. Gretchen and Ms. Manuela were recognized for their outstanding growth in the area of letter identification. They started the year with 23% of their kids proficient or advanced in the area of letter identification, they increased that to 57% by the end of first quarter. They've used multiple interventions, including modified EIBI, and they also do a lot of STEM activities, there's always Science Friday going on in their classroom. But really, this is not just a current trend, last year, they ended with 100% of their students proficient and advanced in the area of letter identification. So that is our Williams Collaborative Team.
Now we'll move to Spotlight on Education of Wood Elementary, Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Dionne?
Dionne.
Dionne.
I would first like to recognize Ms. Chelsea Lane as our Certified Board of Education Spotlight recipient. Ms. Lane currently teaches our EL program at Wood Elementary. She sees 60 students who speak a combined total of 17 other languages. She is married to her husband Todd, and they have a super sweet 15-month-year-old named Trey. When Ms. Lane is not at school, she enjoys spending every minute she can with her husband and her son. Ms. Lane has been working for the Waynesville School District for seven years. She previously taught in a 3rd grade classroom for three years and has now been our EL teacher for four years. She is very passionate about her instruction. She wants to see every student succeed, no matter if it is a student of hers or not. One staff member commented, "One of my favorite things she does is she introduces herself to every new student that arrives at Wood and learns their name." Ms. Lane works our breakfast line and helps to greet the students with a smile every morning. She truly wants to build a relationship with each student. Some of Ms. Lane's students said, "She is very funny and nice, she helped me a lot with my math post-test, it seemed easy when she taught it to us." Another staff member commented, "Her ability to listen to concerns and then suggest ways to improve instruction or address activities to be used with all learning levels is a true gift." She is not afraid to speak her mind when she feels that something should be adjusted to help a student learn in a different way. Congratulations, Chelsea, thank you for all you do for the students and staff at Wood Elementary. I would now like to recognize Mr. Todd Humphrey as our Classified Board of Education Spotlight Mr. Todd has worked 14 years in the Waynesville School District, and nine of those have been for Wood Elementary. He takes his job very seriously, he cares deeply about our building staying clean, organized, and germ-free. If there is a spill or a mess, you can be sure Mr. Todd will be there as soon as possible to help clean it up. He greets students by name and gives them positive reinforcement when he sees them doing something good. When we asked students about Mr. Todd, they had this to say, "I'm thankful for him always cleaning our school, he's a hard worker and he's really funny." One staff member said, "There have been many times when I have seen him taking challenging students who need a little extra role model under his wing and form positive lasting connections with them." Another staff member said, "He always goes above and beyond what is expected of him and meets more than the expectation, he does a phenomenal job. If Mr. Todd is asked to complete a task, it always gets done quickly and efficiently. We are so thankful to have such a hard-working custodian taking care of our building." Thank you, Mr. Todd, and congratulations on your recognition as our Classified Board Education Spotlight recipient.
Okay, I would like to recognize our Board of Education Spotlight Collaborative Team to our 3rd grade teachers at Wood Elementary. Each Wednesday, our grade-level teams meet during Late Start PLC to collaborate on student progress and proficiency of our district's standards. Each team looks at their group as a whole and then digs deeper to provide those interventions for individual students. Our steering team looked closely at our team meeting reports and found that 3rd grade is making the most strides towards proficiency amongst the grade levels. 3rd grade was the first team to start breaking their priority standards down by documenting success on their supporting standards as well. They also closely monitor their subgroup data to make sure they're reaching all students in their classrooms. While working on multiplication strategies, they noted that visual representations and manipulatives have proven to show the most growth in the standard. These strategies help their students grow from 13.9% to 88.9% proficiency just within three weeks. I want to thank our 3rd grade team for working hard during our Late Start Wednesdays and doing all they can to help each student succeed.
Move to 8th, Staff Recognitions, Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President, I apologize in advance for my voice, I hope you guys can understand me, I'm struggling a little tonight. It's my honor to again recognize the Transportation Department Employee of the Month, Derek Wilson. Derek Wilson has been a member of our Transportation Department for the past eight years. Derek is, this is his first year driving one of our buses that service special needs students, and he will be noted as saying we need to do whatever we can to help support and meet our students' needs. He is dependable, a hard worker, a smiling face, and everybody that comes in contact with Derek certainly appreciates what he has to offer, so it's my honor to recognize him this month as Transportation Employee of the Month.
Pine Ridge Center, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're going to recognize Pine Ridge Center. Solution Tree recently named Pine Ridge Center a Model PLC for their implementation of professional learning communities at work. To earn Model PLC status, schools must provide proof of strict criteria, including demonstration of a commitment to the PLC concepts, implementation of these concepts for at least three years, clear evidence of improved student learning over time. Once measurable results can be seen, the school must explain its practices, structures, and culture, and submit its application for consideration to the PLC Review Committee. Tonight, we have Brent Gann, the Missouri School Board Region 8 Supervisor, and Ben Tilly from Solution Tree to assist as we recognize Pine Ridge Center. So if you want to come on up and join us?
Well, good evening, my name is Ben Tilly, and I am the State Director for the Missouri branch of Solution Tree. I'm also a proud graduate from the Waynesville School District, so it really is, it really is a great pleasure to be here with you tonight, so thank you so much for allowing time on your agenda for this presentation. Solution Tree, our authors and the professionals who work for our organization worldwide, have long been the leaders in the all-things PLC work. Professional learning communities is the concept that when schools work together as collaborative teams, and they focus on the right work, that the outcomes for kids are dramatically changed. A school who is wanting to be recognized as a model school must have at least three years' worth of work as a professional learning community, they have to submit data that shows their progress towards their goals, and that school also must submit a narrative that shows how they address the four essential questions in the PLC. Question number one being, what is it that we want our students to learn? And that question has to do with the curriculum, with the standards, with the goals that we have for kids. Question number two is, how will we know when our students have learned? So what assessments are in place in the district and in the school to know that students are making those incremental gains? Question number three is, how will the school react when students don't learn? So when students need extra help, extra time, extra support, what processes are in place for those students to receive that additional help? And then the fourth question is, when students already know the content, how will the school respond? A lot of kids have a lot of knowledge, so when a school already knows it, what kind of enrichment is available for those kids to keep them moving on their learning path? I wanted to read just a little paragraph that the school wrote in their application, because I thought it beautifully summed up the thinking of the school, and they wrote, "Our PLC journey is about hope. Hope that we can instill the skills necessary for our students to function in society, to dream that they will have broken the cycle of abuse for their children, and desire for them to find peace with their past in order to walk forward on their journey. Pine Ridge is certainly helping students to find hope." Pine Ridge now joins 24 schools in the state of Missouri and 239 schools nationwide that have been recognized as all-things PLC model schools. Schools who are recognized as model schools can then apply for the yearly award, it's called the De Four Award. That award is given to one school annually, and it's to a school that exemplifies the principles of professional learning communities. The school receives a beautiful trophy and $25,000. So I would love for a Missouri school to win that award. So I would like to have, Kim is here, and I'd like to present with her, to her and her staff, their banner to hang up in their school, so I'm gonna...
Come on, guys, you gotta get your banners.
So we have a banner for the school, we also have a certificate and a letter from our CEO, Jeff Jones, that as long as the school remains current or each year updates their application, that they have a free registration to any Solution Tree event in the nation.
Well, say congratulations to everybody tonight, it's kind of neat to sit in our spot, and as the principals read about the teachers and the Piney staff, you can really see the pride on everybody's face, being, it's unprompted, and the smiles, it's always neat for us to be able to see that, so congratulations, everybody. And we'll move to discussion item, Waynesville Middle School Construction Update, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we'll ask Don Hussman to step up.
Good evening. This evening, we only have about four images to look at, because we're beginning to see a lot of the same thing, which is, which is good, we're making progress. This is an image of the new elevator shaft that's currently just about topped out now, and I think the next one is right adjacent to that shaft where they're still pouring foundations. These images were from November 6th, so they're a little bit older than what you're used to seeing. Brian Nash will be on site tomorrow, rather Wednesday. Little bit more of the same thing, foundations, this is actually standing in the school, and we're looking toward one of the music areas and the instrument storage room immediately behind that wall is Historic 66. And I think this is our last image, and again, we're looking at foundation walls, it's a little hard to tell what's, what's going on, in a couple more months, I think we'll see a little bit more of a, of a building that looks like a school. So if there's anything I could answer, be happy to do so.
Still running on time?
Yeah, we, yes, things are, you know, we're experiencing some inclement weather, the contractor has registered for time extension for weather days, that's logical in a, in a period like this, but right now, we're still holding schedule. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Proposed job descriptions, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President, the following attached job descriptions are presented for your review as a first reading. 2.14.3 Assistant Principal, 2.19.1 Principal/Homless Coordinator, 3.18.1 Practical Nursing Program Coordinator. Administration will request approval at the regular December meeting.
Thank you. Special Education Program Review, Dr. Washington.
Good evening, I have the pleasure of going over the special ed program that I oversee for Waynesville Schools. So my office is in charge of two areas, the first is effective practices, and that looks at all the programming that we offer for our students in special ed, to make sure that we're offering them all of the options that they need to meet the goals of their IEPs. And then compliance is something that we look at regarding the Missouri State Plan for Special Education, to make sure that we're in compliance with all of our programming that we offer. Some of the goals that we have for 1920, we want to continue to expand our post-secondary transition program. Many of you are familiar with Tiger Joe, that is our coffee shop in the high school, and we were recognized by DESI last summer, which I'll talk more about, for being an outstanding site for post-secondary transition. We also want to look at targeted PD for our special educators, as well as for our general educators who work with our students with special needs. We're looking at expanding our service delivery model and providing more emotional and behavior support for our students, and also looking at the curriculum utilized in special education. In special ed, our goal is always to close that gap with our general ed students, and I can proudly say that our special ed students in Waynesville exceed the state average for special ed students across every grade level, so we're very proud about that. I couldn't do it without my staff, they do a fantastic job, and this is the staff that make up the special ed program. I won't read through all of them, but I'm very blessed to have this team. If you look at our special ed district profile, we are growing, we've had many students transfer in, we identify new students that come in from first steps or from other districts. So for the 1718 school year, we had 970 students in special education, and for the 1819 school year, we jumped up to 1,103 students. So we continue to grow, which means we have to continue to look at our programming needs to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our students. Section 504s are also under my office, currently, we have 266 students with Section 504 plans. They're a little bit different than IEPs, because they're under Office of Civil Rights, and they provide accommodations in the general ed classrooms. So we're going to take a brief look at each special ed program at each building and talk about what's going on in the district. So Williams Early Childhood, and there's Chatson, one of our therapy dogs, he was an action hero that day. We have 125 students currently in our program, seven of those are early childhood special ed, and then we have one blended classroom, which is ECSC and PACE. We have one 504 student, and already this school year, they've completed 144 initial evaluations and two reevaluations. At East Elementary, we have seven special ed classrooms, our transitions room is new this year, it's for students who don't quite need the full support of any... It's for students who don't quite need the full support of NED classroom. That's for students with emotional disturbance but not quite ready to go into gen ed full-time. So we have that where we work on social skills. And we've also brought on co-teaching for our fourth and fifth-grade students as well. Freedom, we have three resource rooms, two autism ID rooms, two ED rooms, and we also co-teach there as well with our third and fourth graders. And we service 200 students with IEPs at Freedom. Partridge, we have 29 students who we service in two special ed classrooms. We brought on a dot-com therapy this year, and the students love it. We have two dot-com therapists and a part-time in-house therapist. And then we have six students who have 504 plans there. At Thayer, we have one classroom with 15 students, and we have two part-time SLPs who work with our students as well as four students who have 504 plans. At Wood, we have three special services classrooms, so we service 38 students. Two of those are cross-cat, and one is our on-post district CSS program. CSS stands for Communication, Sensory, and Socialization. Many of those students have an autism diagnosis and can't be serviced in their home school, so they service students from Thayer, Partridge, and Wood. Many of those students are in Special Olympics or Young Athletes, so some of the things that we offer, and 12 on 504 plans. Sixth grade center, we currently have 77 students who have IEPs. And we have two resource rooms, two inclusion teachers, and then one autism ID teacher. And we have 27 students with 504s. Middle school, right now, we're offering about 19 co-taught classes, and we continue to try to offer more each year. And then we also offer 29 SI classes. That's our specialized instruction. Then we have one ID autism classroom. So total at the middle school, we service 111 students who have IEPs. And in the high school, I told them only one slide, but they did four because they're overachievers. So I'm going to quickly go over theirs. They have 182 students with IEPs. We offer 17 special ed classes at the high school for students who need that small-group setting. But I'm really proud of, we offer 39 sections of co-taught classes across four core areas. So whatever needs the students have, we try to meet once they go to high school. Our transitions classes have really evolved. We have Transitions 1, 2, and 3. In Transitions 1 and 2, they start working at Tiger Joe to learn some of those skills. We emphasize study skills and career exploration. And Transitions 1 is where we sit down with the student and really go over their IEP with them. Many of them at that point did not know they had an IEP, and we feel like it's important that they advocate for themselves. Transitions 3, that's when we start looking at post-secondary. They're filling out job applications. They do not leave that class without a resume and a cover letter, scholarship applications. That's all part of what we provide for our students with special needs in Transitions 3. And then our classroom that focuses on ID autism is all about transition to work. And we look at different levels of students and the independent level that we're looking to achieve for them. So there are some pictures there. And then Tiger Joe, I talked about before, was recognized by DESI. It was founded back in 2007, and that's an authentic learning experience for our students who service our students and staff. And then last but not least is Pine Ridge. And we service 74 students there with special needs, one elementary class, one middle school class, and five high school classrooms. And we have students from all over the United States who transfer into Pine Ridge, third through 12th grade. Follow us on Twitter, hashtag #WaySchoolsWaySped, and I'll take any questions.
Don't have any questions, but I will say Tiger Joe does have good coffee.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Washington. Move to Action. MSBA Full Maintenance Service Agreement, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's that time of year where we go back and look at our full service maintenance agreement with the Missouri School Boards Association. The annual sum is $4,317. This does take care of all policy updates, monitoring of changes in federal and state law, and adjusting applicable district policies and procedures.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion. I have a second. Dr. Fulmer makes a second. Show of hands. Yays? Yays, Carrie? So candidate filing dates, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board candidate filing dates for the April 7, 2020 General Municipal Election are Tuesday, December 17, 2019, through Tuesday, January 21, 2020. Candidates may file at the superintendent's office, their regular office hours from 7:30 a.m. through 4:00 p.m., except for the first and last day of filing. Filing will not occur on days that the school district's central offices are closed due to inclement weather. Filing will also not occur on the following holidays and breaks when the school district's central offices are closed: December 24th, December 25th, December 26th, December 31st, and January 1st and 20 of 2020. Filing will end on January 21, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. There are three positions available with three-year terms. Dan Dearing, Dr. Leroy Fulmer, Mike Keeling currently serve as the board members in those positions that will be open.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Kyler makes a motion. I have a second.
I have a second.
Mr. Quinn makes a second. All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Proposed 2020-2021 school calendar, second reading, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. My office has not received any questions or concerns, and so administration is requesting approval of the proposed 2021 school calendar at this time.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Fulmer makes a motion. I have a second. Mrs. Kyler, second. All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Proposed job descriptions, second reading, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job descriptions are presented for a second reading. 4.10.1 Principal-Secretary Elementary. 4.10.2 Principal-Secretary Middle School. 4.11.2 Principal's Discipline-Secretary High School. Administration requests approval of the above-named job descriptions.
Have any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion. I have a second. Mr. Quinn, second. All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. District surplus, Dr. Berger.
Another round of surplus, Mr. President. And thank you. Board approval is requested to declare outdated technology equipment as surplus property. All items will be published through Tiger Tales for sale by way of online government auction, govdeals.com.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Fulmer makes a motion. I have a second. Mr. Dearing, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven on motion carries. And with that, proposed revision to the 1919-20 staffing plan, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. As noted in the board update, we've had a new student move into Freedom Elementary that requires a one-on-one paraprofessional according to their IEP. And so I come to you tonight asking a revision to the staffing plan with an additional 1.0 FTE paraprofessional at Freedom Elementary, please.
Any comments or questions? I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. And with that, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Be safe out there. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that a motion.
Mr. Keeling makes the motion. Mr. Quinn, seconds. Can't break tradition, man. What are you doing?
I know, right?
Vote. All in favor, show of hands. We are adjourned.